Go ahead and get started. So excited to see if a packed house for a board meeting, awesome. Okay, welcome to the Kinneland Board of Education regular meeting for March 25th, 2025. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Kinneland Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Suburban Trends on January 19th, 2025, posted in the Kinneland Public Library, filed with the Borough Clerk, and posted on the district website. Ms. Francisco, will you pull the board, please?
Mrs. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Perella.
Here.
Mr. Pepe.
Ms. Portman.
Here.
Mr. Eisenmenger.
Here.
Ms. Donaldson.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands on nation, America, and whose sovereignty shall be served.
Okay, routine matters. We have approval of the minutes for the February 1st, 2025 special meeting and the February 25th regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the meeting minutes? I just would like to say thank you, Ms. Francisco, because you really did a nice job capturing a lot of the comments. We had a lot of comments on the 25th, some positives and negatives, but you really did a nice job capturing them as a matter of record, so I appreciate that.
I will thank Lauren because she helps.
Okay, well, please let Lauren know.
I will, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Okay, seeing no other further discussion, can you pull the board, please?
Sure. Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Perella.
Yes.
Ms. Portman.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger.
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson.
Yes. Student representative, Saloni.
Hi all, I hope you're all doing well. I'd just like to share some accomplishments of the students from the halls of Kinneland Public Schools. So, starting off with Keel Cisco, firstly, Keel Cisco had a fantastic week celebrating our love of reading during Read Across America, March 3rd to 7th, 2025. Thank you to the PRM and KHS students who came to Keel to facilitate special activities with our students to commemorate the week. Next, we also hosted the Adventures in Aviation program at the Kinneland Public Library the evening of Wednesday, March 5th. Thank you to our families for coming out. We had more than 75 Keel Cisco students in attendance. Thank you to Ms. Gersten and the Public Library for all of their efforts. Planning for next year's program with the B theme has already commenced. Our second grade students are very excited to have pen pals and this year's KHS Trust Club students. Thank you, Dr. Florio, for coordinating the special program for our students. We are also very excited to welcome Gloria the Potter to Keel this week to facilitate a special pinch pot making activity in all of our art classes. Now that spring has officially sprung, we are very excited about all the growth and learning that is in store during the next few months at Keel Cisco. We will issue our April calendar at the end of this week with an exciting sneak peek. Moving on to Stony Brook, on February 28th, Stony Brook hosted its fourth grade dance. Thank you to Keisha for sponsoring this event and to all of our students and families that attended. Stony Brook also celebrated an exciting Read Across America week during the week of March 3rd. Thank you to the Retired Educators Club of Cedar Crest, the KHS Honor Society students, and Mayor Frieda, who visited our classrooms and read to our students. Stony Brook also welcomed author Chris Grabenstein on March 10th. He met with our students and shared his experiences as an author. Thank you to Keisha for this amazing day. Next, Social School Worker Week was celebrated during the week of March 3rd. Thank you to our school social worker, Ms. Sultana, for all that you do for our students. Also, congratulations to our fourth grade boys and our fifth grade boys' travel basketball team who won their championship games. We are so proud of you. Also, congratulations to our Destination Imagination team. They won first place in their category on Saturday, March 22nd, in the NJ Tournament. Congratulations go out to Lila Zinowix, Aiden Cervolo, Ella Wallwick, Leo DeCunzo, Anna Marchiano, and Madeline Santos. Lastly, Stony Brook School is excited to welcome Gloria the Potter during the week of March 31st. Moving on to PRM, the PRM Talent Show was held on Thursday, February 27th. Our student performance treated the audience to an amazing show and musical performances by our staff members were enjoyed by all. We thank our talent show advisor, Ms. Kizer, for everything she did to make this event possible. Also, representatives from the Seeing Eye, the organization that raises and trains Seeing Eye dogs, visited with our sixth graders on February 28th. Our students learned about their important work. This also marked the beginning of the sixth grade Pennies for Puppies fundraiser. Moving on, the parent meeting in preparation for the eighth grade overnight field trip to Philadelphia and Gettysburg took place on March 6th. A recording of the meeting is available on our website. Next, the seventh and eighth grade teen canteen was held on March 14th. Our seventh and eighth graders had a great time with a variety of activities, including a silent disco, games, Hungry Hippo, inflatable, basketball, cornhole, and more. We thank the PRM HSA for making this happen. And lastly, PRM presents The Little Mermaid on Friday and Saturday, April 4th and 5th. Tickets are available on our website and can also be purchased at the door. And lastly, KHS. KHS announced the class of 2025 valedictorian, Miranda Drace. Miranda earned the highest cumulative GPA in the class over her four years at KHS. Miranda will be attending Princeton University and majoring in applied mathematics. The class of 2025 saluditorian is Sarah Garg. Over her four years at KHS, Sarah earned the second highest cumulative GPA in the class. Sarah will be attending New York University Stern School of Business. Also, a huge congratulations to the KJS United Hockey Team for winning the public co-op ice hockey championship with a 4-3 victory over Marlboro and Home. So this was a victory over Marlboro and Home Del at the Prudential Center. KJS United, which is Kinneland, Jefferson, and Sparta, was formed in 2020, and this is their first state championship as a tri-op team and Kinneland's second overall state ice hockey championship. And lastly, this week, KHS welcomed former NFL player Bray Lucas, who gave his presentation Knockout Opioid Abuse to the KHS student body. Thank you.
Nicely done, Saloni. Okay, so, the reason why you're all here, the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. President, Saloni.
We have riveting business to discuss at the very end of all this, so you're welcome to stay. It's just really exciting.
All right, so welcome, everybody. This, um, this is what it's all about. So unfortunately, part of what we deal with as a Board of Education and in my role, and sometimes in classrooms, it filters down, you're not blind to it, with the news and everything else where aspects of our world and society filter into school, and really they have no place there. This is what school is about. This is why I, many, many years ago, got into this profession, and I love this profession to give back, and why our educators here in Kinneland give back. And here we are, to a packed house tonight, to honor your children, our students. So, um, these are the moments that you want to hang on to. For our students, our young students, I know you're excited to be here every time the first time, or if it's more than your first time, you're excited, it's a new experience. And I also know for the middle schoolers and for our high schoolers, and maybe in your mind, you said, oh, do I really have to do this again? But, uh, but remember, years from now, you'll remember sitting here with your parents or your grandparents, and that you had this moment together. So embrace it and enjoy it, because the time just goes by too quickly, and I wish I had some of those moments back myself. So that's just some advice from somebody who's north of 50 to our young people today. Um, okay, so just a few announcements that, um, hopefully you want to share with your neighbors. I know there's a lot of discussion out there about the Give Back Days. These are the two dates that are unofficial right now, that are on our calendar. And traditionally, um, if you grew up in the seventies and eighties, it was a phone chain, and usually it was a snowstorm. But what we know now is there's many more reasons why we have to close schools, so we call them emergency days. Right now, despite the cold of three months, which fell from Thanksgiving till the end of February, we only used one. We were pretty good. A lot of those storms and ice storms hit, causing delays or, um, you know, early dismissals, or they fell on weekends. But we do have two days left, so we're going to hold on, get through the month of April, and then at the April 29th meeting, if we haven't used any days, those would be the two days. We would extend, um, our Memorial Day break and sprint into June into all our commencement. I double-checked with our athletics and each of our building principals, because as you know, that's state testing, there's class trips, there's much that's going on aside from the world of athletics, and those would be the two best days to utilize. So, um, please share that information with your neighbors, or, you know, guide them to the website, come tomorrow, that's what we're looking at if anybody wants to pre-plan. Uh, we do have some big events coming, April 12th. We have our second Diversity Derby Day, and this year it'll be held at Stony Brook School. It's a big event. Um, it's been an initiative of my office in the Board of Education for the last two years, and I really, I want to thank our co-founders and co-presidents, one of them who sits at our table, Solani Mattel, and also Catherine Fritz here, both students at the high school. They came to me two years ago with Mr. Suda, and they had an idea about a club, ability awareness, um, in impacting in a positive way our special needs population, both within our community and out. They've done a tremendous job, and then Ms. Davidman came on board, I want to thank her. Dr. Bott, our very own Dr. Bott, is the advisor. K-Cares this year jumped in, Kinneland Rec, Ms. Schuckers, I want to thank her, and our Keisha, of course, K5, tremendous. So, all of those groups are coming together on April 12th. Everybody's welcome to attend. It's at Stony Brook School. If you have nothing to do that morning, stop on by. Then on April 29th, we do have our public presentation for our budget adoption for 25-26. I always encourage our community to get involved, at least, you know, take a look back to the preliminary budget, or gain some knowledge as to why sometimes your taxes go up, and you get that little tax bracket change in, in August, as we all do. Um, but that'll take place on April 29th. Then on May 1st, 6th, and 8th, we have principal forums, but they're more or less introductions at different schools. The names change, uh, at the school, but you know the people and the players. You have Mr. Mangan, who will do his introduction over at Keel School. You'll have Ms. Alawale at the high school on the 6th, and you'll have Mr. Suda in the middle school on the 8th. On May 20th, in this very room, we will recognize our Teacher and Ed Specialists of the Year and our retirees. On May 21st, I encourage everyone once again to join us for our, uh, second tri-form presentation. That's steered by Curriculum and Instruction and Education, and our department chairs and district administration. It's about all the new programs we will be implementing going forward. A lot of that impacts K-12. So I don't want you to think that it's just a high school thing, or it's a PRM thing, it's a K-12, it's universal, it covers the gamut. So, uh, if you can't make it on the 21st, you could always zoom in, and the next day, all of our presentations are on the website, so you could always find us. Uh, May 29th, we have our senior awards here at Kinneland High School. The 10th, we will be doing this again at our public meeting with district-wide student recognition and spring sports, also with our 24-25 district and Board of Education update on our goals. Then June 10th, we have our Moving Up Celebration earlier in the day here from Stony Brook. On June 12th, we have PRM at 9:00 AM, that commencement ceremony, and then June 13th, Friday the 13th, last day of the year, 10:00 AM. Hopefully it doesn't rain, we don't have storms that we have to play the game and move things back, um, but that kicks off at 10:00 AM on the high school field. So, a lot happening, it will happen quickly. So for anyone in here who is a parent of a senior or our senior students, hold on to the moment, because it goes quick. And with that, now, we will start our awards. How it will work is that each of the building principals will come up, building by building. They're going to do their own speeches, they're going to do their own presentation. When they're done, there's a backdrop outside the doors here. If the parents, if parents you want to go with your children, you want to take pictures, uh, we will have staff there, you can do so. Okay? And that's how we'll do it. We'll do it orderly, and, uh, building by building. So at this point, I'm done speaking. Ms. Alawale, you were up first with your Keel Koala Kindness Awards. Ms. Alawale.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Jennifer Alawale, so thank you, Mr. Mango. And I am so very excited to present our Keel Koala Kindness Award recipients this evening. So what I'm going to ask our students to do, so beginning with kindergarten, when I call your name, please stand up in the crowd, give us a little wave, so that's how we're going to operate this evening, and then following our recognition, I will meet all of our students out in the hallway, outside of the auditorium, so that we can take a picture together, and really celebrate you and all of the great things that you bring to Keel School every day. So our, our Keel Koala Kindness Award is all about our students, who really represent our full values. They come into school every single day, putting their best foot forward, consistently have a positive attitude, and really just serve as the model, as exemplary students who are really building and forging the foundation of our great schools here in Kinneland. So we are really excited to recognize our youngest learners this evening, and we'll start with kindergarten. So kindergartners, when I call your name, please stand tall and proud and give us a wave as we celebrate you this evening. So we're going to begin with Leila Blay. Leila, if you can stand up, congratulations! And we'll keep naming our students. RJ Katanzaridi, stand on up for us, we see you there, congratulations! We have Holden Davies here this evening, there he is in the back. Next, we have Kenzie Rehovcek. Kenzie, I saw you, there you are. Congratulations. James Lieber, James. Congratulations, James. If we can have Charles Moser, Charles, congratulations! Congratulations to Charles. Benjamin Wallawick, Benjamin, congratulations, Benjamin, excellent job. Avery Cervalo, Avery, congratulations, there she is, I know we've been excited all day. And Thomas Holman will round out our kindergarten. Congratulations! Congratulations, our amazing kindergarten students, thank you for being the example. And we're going to go on to first grade now, if we can recognize Sophia Neinstadt, Sophia. There she is. Ainsley Jordan, Ainsley, there she is, congratulations. Saiyanj Patel, Saiyanj, there he is, congratulations. We have Nev Gallin, Nev, there she is, congratulations, Nev, amazing job. Ava Pastori, Ava, there she is. Congratulations, Ava. And last but not least, we have Shay Grasso, Shay, congratulations! And congratulations to our first grade Keel Koala Kindness Award recipients. So thank you. And then, now we're moving on to our second grade students this evening. We're going to start with Michael Deck, congratulations, Michael. All right, next we have Jason Dunst, Jason, there he is. Shane Maloney, Shane. Congratulations. Abrielle McDermott, Abrielle, congratulations. We have Ellis Myers, Ellis, congratulations! And last but not least, Maya DeMarai, Maya, there she is, congratulations. So once again, thank you all so much for your support of our Keel Koala Kindness Award recipients, you are all amazing. We are so proud of all that you do on a daily basis, and I will meet you outside the main entryway doors here, so we can take pictures. We will start with kindergarten, and I have our little Keel Koala goodies for you. Thank you all so much, and I'll pass it to Ms. Utel. Sure. Okay.
I'm just going to give everyone a minute to go out. I love it. That's what I did, that's what I figured. Give them some time, once that gets out, then I'll... Yes, I think we spoke tonight, yeah. Oh, okay, thank you, but we got it right on the certificate, don't worry. Okay, beautiful. Thank you, how are you?
Good.
Oh, I love this. I'm trying to see where I can bring the kids up, like here to here. Mr. Sheckman, where do you, do you want to stand next to me, so that you can speak, and then I'll kind of shimmy over and hand out the certificates?
Sure, I'll have the roster, I'll take that out.
Okay, yep, I have it here, too. I could just leave this to you, and then you can hand me the certificates.
Sure.
I'll leave these here, and then you just hand it to me as, if you want to do this, yeah, easier?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll say a little bit about what they do.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I first want to say thank you to Mr. Mango and to the board. This is such an important moment, because we get to recognize students who, first of all, get to school on a Friday morning at 8:10, and thank you to parents for getting there so early, but it's really just a moment for you to understand how hard they work in this business club. And I just want to, if you see next to me, there are some very important people that need to be recognized before we really recognize the most important people and the reason why we are here this evening. Mr. Sheckman has been doing the business club for years. It is one of the most sought-after clubs as students begin to enter fifth grade, they talk about it during fourth grade, it usually has a waiting list that is a page long, and he gives his heart and soul into this program. The students walk away learning about finances, credit card debt, how not to go into credit card debt. They talk about stocks, they buy stocks, they sell stocks, and to listen to them on Friday mornings, talk about money and financial literacy is amazing. But then to my right, he has made this amazing... But then to my right, he has made this amazing connection with the people like KHS that has to be spoken about. Mrs. Gilligan is the head of the business club at KHS and also teaches business classes. Next to her, two amazing co-presidents of the business club, along with one of their members. They currently are up to 44 members of the business club. And the end of our business club at Stony Brook ends with our students making a trip here to the high school. And I come every year, and thank you, parents. They're dropped off at 7:30 here at the high school, because as we know, they start much earlier, but they share their knowledge and wealth. And more importantly, the kids get to sit and interview with every student of the business club. They come dressed up, they learn about etiquette when they go on an interview. They learn about what to say and what not to say. They talk about things that they're going to encounter in the real world, even if they're going for their first job in the summer of their high school years, and it is an honor. So I just want to take a moment, not only to say thank you to Mr. Sheckman for the job that he has done with our business club at Stony Brook, so please join me in first giving him a round of applause. But then I really want to say thank you to Mrs. Gilligan and Mr. Suda, Mr. Arroyo, for allowing our students to come here to the high school to really see what business life is like as they move up. So thank you. Thank you to your students. Thank you, ladies, to the, thank you to as being a member. They did a wonderful job, and I just, please join me in acknowledging them as well. So what we're going to do at this time, we're going to do a little bit differently. We're going to call each student up. We're going to ask you to come up, boys and girls. I'm going to have you start standing here. We're going to hand you a certificate, and then families afterwards, we'll have the students go up the middle aisle, go outside for pictures. We would like to try to take a group picture with our high school students, as well as Mr. Sheckman and Mrs. Gilligan. So if you can bear with us afterwards, we'd like to go take a group picture, and then you have the time to take individual photos, because it is, as Mr. Mango said, a moment to remember. So we're going to start, and Mr. Sheckman has a few words before we begin.
So for some of the younger students that are still here, the business club covers a lot of topics. Mrs. Utell covered a lot of them. Some of them include creating a mock business, which is perfect because it goes right into the Treps Club, which is a pro miller. And I know that Mrs. Gilligan and FBLA actually do a lot of work with the Treps Club as well. So the Treps Club gets to work with the younger ones from Stony Brook Business Club, as well as the older ones at Kinnon High School. Mrs. Utell spoke about the stock market competition, and one of the students, I know the students learn probably the most important thing in their financial literacy, which are these things. Can anybody tell me the most important thing you learned about credit cards? Anybody remember? Evan? Pay them in full. That's right. Exactly. Without further ado, I'm going to call your students up, have them come up, get their certificate, and let's get the ball rolling. Mrs. Gilligan, do you want to say anything? I'm sorry.
Well, I see there's a lot of younger students here. I hope to see you in a few years. We have a very rich business program here at Kinnon High School. We teach, I mean, I teach five different courses, accounting honors, business law, finance, entrepreneurship, and marketing, but we also have four business clubs, and together, all those clubs have 130 members. So we're fine.
All right, Emma Bordanero, come on down. Tell her I'll sign that later. Amanda Brock. Valentina Siri. Lila Siri. Emma Koka. Zachary Colho. Matilda Deja. Aradia Dusain. She's not here, I know. I don't think so. Oh, no, she is. Peyton Everts. Magnum Gons. Wyatt Jefferson. Julia King. Jax King. Evan Lombardo. Evan, Evan, come here, Evan. Thaddeus Luke. Emily McNanny. Sophia Maris. Eric Maris. Channing Markley. Nathan Meadows. Roman Perella. Sanvi Patel. Gianna Pepe. Annabelle Pio Costa. Charlotte Reed. Jackson Reed. Cole Reitinger. Stefan Schaefer. Sophia Schlachter. Benjamin Schaefer. Oakley Shaw. Ishani. Byron Sinj. Emerson Tate. Madison Taylor. Matthew Zoltik. And last but not least, Mackenzie Zeigman.
Again, I just want to say thank you to all of you, parents, for your time, dedication, support, bringing them to school so early, to Mr. Sheckman, to Mrs. Gilligan, to her students, and most importantly, to our students. I am so very proud of you and the work that you have put into this club, and you should be very, very proud of yourselves. Please join me, everyone, in giving them one last round of applause. So families, I'm going to have your children, boys and girls, we're going to go up the middle outside to the left, and then, parents, if you would like to follow, we'll try and take a group photo, and then you can take individual pictures. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. It is so wonderful to be able to do this celebration with so many people around. Mrs. Yosefides and I are here to recognize our pillars of character, and I think one of the great things about middle school is, over those years between elementary and high school, our students really go through a journey of finding themselves, of moving from that childhood stage to that young adult stage, and over the course of that, we really get to see so many amazing changes, and we get to see all the ways in which they stand out. And what we're going to talk about today, these pillars of character, are the ways that these students truly shine. Our teachers on the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade team, and our core team, Mrs. Yosefides and I, our counselors, all our support staff, we always have our eyes out, and we get to see the wonderful ways in which the students interact, the wonderful ways in which they set examples, and the students that we are talking about today truly shine in the way that they just raise the level of themselves and everybody around them. So with that said, let's look at our pillars of character. Students, when we call your name, please come down. We're going to have you line up over here to my right, and you're going to, we're going to have everybody together. We'll take a picture at the end as well. We'll begin with the pillar of caring. This is awarded to students who are kind and compassionate in their interactions with others. The way in which they carry themselves makes PRM a warm and welcoming place to be. The following students earn the pillar of caring in the second marking period. Please join me in congratulating Catalina Gomez and Reagan Caden.
Good evening. The pillar of citizenship is awarded to students who make choices that protect the rights and safety of others, demonstrate the qualities of being a good community member, and cooperate well with others. Simply stated, their actions make our school and community better. The following students receive the pillar of citizenship in the second marking period. Richard Cho. Andrew Gallus. And Jacob Klezav.
The pillar of respect is awarded to students who are considerate of others' feelings, are courteous to others, are accepting of differences, and treat others how they would like to be treated. They'll let those around them know through their words and actions that they are valued. The following students receive the pillar of respect in the second marking period. Please join me in congratulating Chase Lawrence and Madeline Murphy.
The pillar of responsibility is awarded to students who consistently try their best, persevere when they face challenges, demonstrate self-discipline, and are accountable for their words and actions. They set a positive example for everyone with whom they interact. The following students receive the pillar of responsibility in the second marking period. Victor Glowiak. Robert Hampton. And Julia Locke.
The pillar of trustworthiness is awarded to students who are honest, loyal, and follow through on what they say they will do. These students can be relied upon in any situation, and their integrity shines through in their actions and interactions each day. The following student received the pillar of trustworthiness in the second marking period. Please join me in congratulating Ian Espejo. Congratulations to all our pillars of character. Okay, thank you to our pillars of character. Right outside the door, parents, if you would like to, there is the backdrop, the Kinnon backdrop, if you would like to take pictures, and students, you can go through the main aisle that way. Congratulations again. All right, and in the next phase of tonight's recognitions, we are going to move on and talk about some truly outstanding musicians. So to commence that portion of the evening, please join me in welcoming Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you. As Mr. Mangin said, there's some seriously high-level accomplishments that we are extremely proud of, these kids, for doing this, but there's a couple other things I'll mention. But the first thing I'd like to do is mention the kids who were selected and successfully auditioned for North Jersey Area Band. So I'm going to do them in a different order than what's up here, simply because there's a few things that I'm going to want to say about them. So, but either way, I'd like to recognize our two clarinet players, who were Michaela Gataletta and Amelia Jeckek, both eighth-grade clarinet players. If you're here, please come on down. Then another one I'd like to mention is Miss Isabella Holman, and if you know her, it's Izzy Holman, but one cool thing about Izzy was, Izzy started playing bass clarinet with us a little into the seventh grade year, and learned so fast, worked so hard, and was able to achieve this high level. So I know Izzy couldn't be with us tonight, but I did not want to skip over that incredible accomplishment of this incredibly hard-working young lady. Then I would like to recognize our two trombone players. These two guys have been at each other's throats in a very nice way for two straight years now. They've been at every competition where we can go, and the two of them work together, and it's amazing how close they come. But Mr. John Fusa on trombone, and it's really important to recognize Richard Cho, who was a first chair. That means he was the highest-scoring one. Come on down, Richard. I know John couldn't make it tonight. And then, it's also important, before I go to the last kid, I should have said this before Richard came up, but before, just going back to about 20, I was on 2019, maybe 2020, around the pandemic, or a little bit before that, but we went through about a 10-year run, maybe eight to 10 years, where we had one or two kids who were what we call first chair, in other words, the highest-scoring kids in the group on their instrument. It's important, though, that Richard was one of those first chairs, but John Fusa was one point behind him. But before we call up our last guy, Colin Tobia also plays first, so we had two first chairs, and it's been an incredible accomplishment. We have not had that in a long time. Come on up, Colin, I know you're here. It was, it was great to have such a large number of kids. This is a group that's made up of 30 schools. We all recommend kids, then they select to make a balanced band, and then those kids audition for their spots. But as our program's grown, it's nice to see our numbers in the group are going back up with six kids. In the past, our biggest year was 12. We had a much larger band, but hopefully, we're on the way back up, and we'll see if we can have that. Thank you, guys, so much, and especially Richard and Colin for bringing that first chair on or back to Pearl Miller where it belongs. We're very happy with you, guys. It's a whole new thing. We have to start again. So the next group, New Jersey Region One Junior High Band. This is the most competitive group that a middle school instrumentalist can audition for. This is the entire northern part of the state. It is extremely competitive. In most instrument groups, there's as many, you know, from 30 to as many as 80 or 90 kids trying out for a very small group of spots. But you can see, there's a couple repeats up here, but I definitely want to mention something about these three. But I definitely want to mention something about these three guys, very, very important thing. We were at their concert, and it was actually, you guys kept me busy this year. I was at a lot of concerts on many Sundays all over the state. But one cool thing is that this year's region concert, they recognized a young gentleman because for this group, you're eligible for seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. So you have three years you can be in there. And this one young man was there for his third year. So they called him up and recognized him at the beginning of the concert. And I thought that was pretty cool. Then I started thinking, what happens next year? All right, so for, I'm going to call these guys up, but this is on trombone, Richard Cho and John Fusa. And I know John couldn't make it again. Come back up, Colin, let's get our exercise in. Colin Tobia on percussion. Now, there's two levels of bands within it, and it's pretty cool to mention that Colin placed third in the highest-ranked band. So that was a pretty serious accomplishment. So next year, I think it's going to be really cool, because I think after two years, they're probably going to make it their third year. But I think it's going to be pretty cool to recognize three kids from the same school being in this group three years in a row. Really looking forward to seeing you guys repeat this one more time. So thank you, guys, very much. And I am now, I'm done. So I think next on the agenda is Mr. Lanell. And if, guys, if you want to grab some pictures with this weather-beaten old man, we'll go out and meet you in the lobby.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, again, for the opportunity to show, you know, shine a light on the accomplishments of our students, especially in the choral arts. We've had, over the years, we've had a lot of students that have performed in area choir and region choir, all-state choir, the national honor choirs in all these choirs. It's really great that we, as a community, also really start to honor these students. So thank you for that opportunity. We're starting right at the top this evening. This is our first year delving in. I'm not sure it's our first year ever, but at the middle-school level, we have not, in the past, participated in the all-state at that level. And this year, in my going down there, I sought out that opportunity, and it's our first year able to do that. And not only did our honoree make all-state choir, but she came in fifth in the state, which is really a tremendous honor. So when I call your name, please come on down, Savannah Mango. So this is also our, we have a honoree for region choir. Region choir involves all of North Jersey. And as these choirs become more select, become a little bit smaller in the state, there are fewer students that are selected. And so even though it is a more regional choir, it is still very difficult for the students to make it. And we had a student that was selected. You might know the student, that was Savannah Mango. In Morris Area Choir this year, that was in January, we had, we were very lucky in having four students that were able to participate in that choir, put on a wonderful concert. And please come on down when you're called. Audrey Hershenson, Shreya Johnwalla, Savannah Mango, and Jaclyn Waller. Please come on down. Thank you, ladies. We're very proud of your accomplishments, and we hope you'll be many more of these choirs going ahead. Oh, good. All right, so, perfect. They put me in back-to-back, so I wouldn't have to worry about pictures. So at the end, we'll take pictures of all our choir students. So again, we're starting right at the top. New Jersey All-State Choir. The All-State Choir is obviously a very select ensemble. They get to perform not only in down Atlantic City, but at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. Would you have, if you, if, it's really neat to not only get to be there, but to perform on that stage and see the beauty and the spectacle of being in that. So we had a student that was involved in that this year, Anthony Manna. Region One Choir. The Region One Choir, again, is all of North Jersey. And again, even though it is a smaller area, being all of the northern New Jersey, it is a more select ensemble because it's a smaller choir. We were very lucky to have four students that were involved in that this year at the high-school level. Dylan Castellano Smith. Reina Fitterman. Anthony Manna. And Michaela Tobia. And Morris Area Choir, again, as these ensembles, because it's not sort of like sports in the way that it's sort of always the same number, these ensembles become more select as they become in a smaller area. So even though it is a more centralized location for it, they do become, it becomes more difficult to get in. So congratulations to our two students that were selected to Morris Area Choir, Sophia So thank you to all of our students that were able to be here tonight. We're going to take a picture out in the hallway, so all of our choir students, go head out, we'll take a picture. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Lanell. Gary Suda, principal of the high school. I would like to call up Mr. Ryan Stroud for our performing arts in our band program. Is anybody else interested in hearing the inner workings and machinations of how band and choir auditions work in the state of New Jersey? Because I can really walk you through it. I'm just kidding. So we start out in the area, we move up to the region, and then we finish up in all-state. And we're going to go backwards here. So we have New Jersey All-State Band and Orchestra, two really fantastic percussionists who both made the top group. And I think a lot of that's due to maybe the percussion teacher who resides in the middle-school in Mr. Scanlon. But I want to congratulate Luca Anello Fiorino and Michael Piccolo. Yeah, stay here. So this is the backbone here, this is the vertebrae of our band program. So North Jersey Region One Band, we had Luca. And the North Jersey Region One Orchestra, we had Michael. So now we spire out a little bit, and we go to North Jersey Area Band. Really, like, northern New Jersey is super competitive in instrumental music. And we had five kids who made area band, and it's the first time, I want to say, since before the pandemic, that we've had as many as five kids involved in area band. So super proud of these kids for their accomplishments this year, and really, really looking forward to, you know, a bright future. We had a really, a really fantastic year in our band program. So please join us up here, Aaron Charles, Hope Syrenidis, and Emily Sun. All right, and like everybody else, we're going to parade down the center aisle. Did anybody bring their instruments? Thank you very much for your support. Thank you, Mr. Stroud. I'd like to call up Mrs. Sappio. It is our pleasure this evening to recognize one of our very special students, Ms. Saloni Mattel. Saloni, can you come up? I just want you to stand there for a minute. So Saloni came into our high school a couple years ago, and right off the bat, you can tell that Saloni exhibits all the attributes of a natural leader. Immediately, she was communicating with our student government advisors, with the administration in such a kind, respectful, and mature way. We're going to talk this evening about how she was selected to the New Jersey Association of Student Councils as a state officer. And this is really just a remarkable accomplishment that our school has participated in over the years, but it's very, very difficult to receive this nomination and go as a delegate. But before that, Saloni, last year, Mr. Mango mentioned, she was one of two critical leaders in our diversity derby, just amazing work, bringing together the community for special needs. Also, she was a part of our DECA club, which about a few weeks ago, I received an email. They were going down to Atlantic City, and Saloni took it upon herself to reach out to me and mention how the cost per student was about $500, and we were looking at offsetting some prices, some costs for parents. So we worked diligently and found some funds, and we were able to work with Saloni. So here she is, as a student, going through her daily routines and actually working with the administration and to help her peers and also the community. So we went down there, and they did an amazing job. So Saloni Mattel, I'm going to have Mrs. Sappio speak a little bit more. Mrs. Sappio has been a part of this program for over 10 years, and she really has the insight into the New Jersey Association of Student Councils.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. We have been with the New Jersey Association of Student Councils since 2012, and we took upon ourselves to run for state. What's nice is that New Jersey does not recognize central Jersey. They only consider the north and the south, and we get to run every other year. So this past fall, we were able to run our wonderful Saloni Mattel as an executive member. And we have been doing this since 2015. We had other alumni. We had Ryan Kabir, Alex Bjorsen, Mia Corgliano, Sophia Hardy, Jordan Doni. And now we are on our sixth member, and we're so proud of Saloni. And she won Executive Member of State Charity. And this past March, she attended a meeting, and she is going to be selecting one of three charities to represent the state. And she'll be running a meeting in April, on April 28th. What's wonderful about Saloni as well is that she started as an administrative assistant for the NJASC. So she was super involved. She attended the leadership training conference, if anyone is interested in that. It's an amazing opportunity in the summer. But she was involved, and now, look at her, she is now on the state board. There are only nine members on the board in the state of New Jersey, and we should be very proud of her. And we're so happy that she is representing Kinnon High School as our sixth member of the NJASC. So congratulations, Saloni, and we look forward to what you're going to be doing in this upcoming term. And thank you to the board for supporting us.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of the accolades that are given out tonight. We have some, a lot to celebrate in our winter sports. Very exciting season, a lot of conference, state, and state sectional championships. So I'm going to bring the coaches up, because they are the best to speak about their teams. So we're going to start with Pearl Miller Athletics and Mr. Contella to speak about wrestling with his coaching staff.
Yep. We have all the wrestlers. All right, great. First, I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Mango and the board, for putting the night together. I know we said earlier about remembering these nights. It does go quick, so make sure you enjoy these moments that you have with your parents, with your family. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mongan and Ms. Yosefides for all their support throughout the year. Ms. Whitwer here, dealing with my nonsense, calling her all the time, bothering a little bit here and there. I also like to thank the parents for all their support throughout the year, and also Coach Anthony for all his support at the high school, because without that, again, wrestling is a family-type sport, and with everybody getting involved, it just makes us more successful that way. Talking about the season, we were very young this year. We were six and six, but we had a lot of sixth graders step up, because we had a lot of eighth graders leave the program last year. The one thing I could say is they gave everything they had every time they stepped on the mat. People don't realize the schedule that we hold is pretty competitive. We go against a lot of bigger schools, Mount Olive, East Hanover, Morristown. So these are some bigger schools. So when we step on the mat, you know, it's a challenge all the time, and our kids always step up to the challenge. The two handsome gentlemen next to me, Mr. Jones and Mr. Ottega, they deal with my nonsense as well in the room. They helped out this year, assistant coaching. And I'll tell you, I couldn't do a lot without these guys, because, again, wrestling is a unique sport. It takes a special person to do that. Some of the accomplishments of individual impressive records, we had Gunner Lutkins, Jake Pepe, and Damon Markowski have 11 and 3 records. We had Hudson Bop, which is right in the middle, he had an 8 and 5 record. Lennox Manton as well, 8 and 5 record. With the counties, we took six out of, I think it was 16 teams, which is pretty good for not having a full lineup. Damon took second in the counties, Damon Markowski. And we had Gunner Lutkins and Aiden Fernandez take third. We also had Anya Markowski, who unfortunately was hurt during the season. She took first in the states. So that was pretty good in the state tournament. So pretty good accomplishments there. Besides Hudson, we have Carmen PioCosta and Efren Jaromillo here as a part of representing the team. I know a lot of people had some things happening, but I just look at this as, you know, another step, building blocks for the bigger picture, and that's to make Kinnon Wrestling known in the state. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Contella. We're going to bring up boys' basketball, Coach Goff and his team.
Every year, I write something down, and I'm just going to wing it. So first, thank you to the board, Mr. Mango, Mr. Mongan, Ms. Yosefides, Coach Contella and Coach Fink for working together with me to figure out our schedules. Of course, Ms. Whitwer for supporting everything that we do. Coach Kessinger at the high school, we've worked together for the last eight years, and hopefully we're setting up some quality players to you and even better young men. And of course, the parents. So our record was 3 and 7. But, you know, if you know me, it's more than the record. I think the middle-school philosophy is more of growth and getting better and having the fundamentals set. So when they do get to the high school, they hit the ground running. And obviously, to me, you know, these kids all had hearts of champions. They showed grit, determination, and just great team spirit. You know, some years, you have to remind the kids that they're on the same team, but this team never had to worry about that. They're even just sitting back there, they're all, you know, they're just good guys. So real quick, we have Mason Huber, he's the short one in the middle there. Evan Plasio. Evan Plasio. David Ivesevic. Max Taylor. Sam Batista. Sam was our third highest scorer this year on the team. River Ashton. And Evan Plasio. Eighth graders. Eighth graders, just raise your hand for a minute. I wanna just recognize you guys for putting all the effort and being leaders on the team. And then David, you have some big shoes to fill, literally, next year. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Coach Goff. We're gonna bring up girls' basketball, Coach Steph Fink, and any of her team that is here.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight and recognizing our middle school program. We have our eighth grade Maeve here with us, who, since she's the only one that came tonight, I'm gonna talk a little bit about her. So as sixth and seventh graders, it's extremely difficult to come out and try out for the middle school team. There's a lot of nerves that go into it. There's height differences and different challenges along the way, and it's extremely difficult as an eighth grader to come out and try out for the team. But our little Maeve here, she showed up on the first day. She was ready to go, those shoes were tied, and she put her best foot forward. And she really showed our team, our teammates, her parents, everybody, what it takes to be a part of the middle school team. So I wanna say congratulations to Maeve for having the courage to come out for our team. Our team struggled a little bit this year, so we're gonna get back on the board next year. And they did work hard, and we'll talk a little bit more about them next year. And now, I would like to, can I just go right into it? Bring on Coach Mango. And talk about our middle school volleyball team, which Audrey, come on up. Anyone else from middle school? Come on, stand over here. So there is actually two of us. I know it's confusing, Stephanie's, and we match often. We actually just came back from practice, so that's... It's not why we match, I wish it was, but it happens often. We're lucky enough to coach the high school team all the way down to the middle school program. This year, we were able to have three levels. We had over 30 girls try out, and we decided that since there was two of us and we can kinda split our time a little bit, we were gonna keep three levels. So we had an intermurals, a B-team, and an A-team. The A-team majority played the best of three sets, and then we were able to get a couple sets in there with the B-team, and the intermural was just there for practice. But I would say, overall, I think Coach Mango and I can both agree that it was one of our most successful teams that we've had. Maybe not necessarily in record, but we also have a lot of rules. They, we don't allow them to underhand serve, which a lot of the other teams do. We make them pass-set-hit. We run it like it's a varsity team. And sometimes, that sacrifices for the wins and losses. And the last thing I'm gonna say, I have a really funny story about Audrey. I don't know if you know me, don't know me, but I am not a hugger. I maybe give you a high five every once in a while, but that's the most physical contact you're gonna get from me. So this year, when Audrey, as a sixth grader, found out that she made the B-team, she came running over and gave me a big hug. And I gave it right back to her, because she should be proud of herself. She was the only sixth grader that made the B-team. It was well-deserved, and she did an awesome job. So congratulations to Audrey.
Thank you, Coach Fink and Coach Mango. Awesome job down there at the middle school. Thank you to all our middle school athletes and coaches. We're gonna start with our high school sports. We're gonna bring up our girls' basketball coach, Coach Trefari, and any basketball players that he has with him.
All right, hi, everybody. We had an extremely young team this year in our girls' basketball program. Eighty percent of our players being underclassmen. But that didn't stop us from competing hard throughout the season as we continued to improve, playing our best basketball down the stretch, final stretch of our schedule. Some of our highlights from the season. We won our first two games over Booton and Whippany Park, where we scored a combined 100 points total in those games. After a tough stretch over our winter break, we bounced back to win seven out of our next 10 games, with two come-from-behind wins in the fourth quarter over Walk Hill Valley and Ken Place. Another two-game stretch where we had wins over New Brunswick and Lodi, where we combined to make 18 three-pointers and score a total of 117 points in those two games. We emerged as one of the top three-point shooting teams in the area this year, finishing with a total of 121 three-pointers made as a team, which was good for second in our conference and seventh in Morris County, which is widely regarded as one of the best counties in the state for girls' basketball. And we had a great performance in our final game of the season, where we took the number-four seed Waldwick into overtime in the state tournament, coming up just three points short of pulling off a big upset. We ended the season with a record of 13 and 13, with eight of our losses coming by single digits. So I'm extremely proud of the way our team competed this year, how much they improved, and the positive way that they represented our school and our community. And the future for this program is extremely bright. I'd like to recognize our players who received postseason honors. We had four players, one of whom is here tonight, our amazing senior Angie Winters. Angie was our second-leading rebounder this season and finished top-five on our team in points, steals, and assists. Angie finished the season with 148 points, 149 rebounds, 29 assists, eight blocks, and 48 steals. Her performance this season earned her honorable mention All-Morris County. Angie Winters. Even though our other three players aren't here, I'd still like to speak about them. They had terrific seasons for us. So we have freshman guard Gia Sikatella. Gia led our team in blocked shots and was second in three-point shooting, with 38 three-pointers made on the season. She also finished third on our team in points, rebounds, steals, and assists. Gia finished the season with 171 points, 148 rebounds, 31 assists, 20 blocks, and 68 steals. Her performance this year earned her honorable mention All-Conference. Next, we have another freshman guard, Olivia Kerzeki. Olivia not only led our team in steals this season, but she was also the leader in steals in our entire conference. She also led our team in assists and finished second in scoring. She finished the year with 212 points, 106 rebounds, 71 assists, and 105 steals. Her performance this year earned her second-team All-Conference. And our final player is freshman guard Kylie Whelan. Kylie not only led our team in scoring this season, but she was also the leading scorer in the entire conference, finishing third on our team in rebounds and second in steals. She ended the season with 354 points, 143 rebounds, 28 assists, seven blocks, and 84 steals. And her performance this year earned her first-team All-Conference. And that's it for girls' basketball. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. I'd like to bring up our boys' basketball program, Coach Kessinger, his staff, and players that are here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I have five seniors with us tonight, plus my assistant coach, DeBelle. It's hard to imagine these guys are seniors. Goes by so fast. Jace Marone, Nick Petricelli, Dominic Petricelli, Zach Grand, and Ryan Gang. We had a good season. We had eight wins. We beat some local teams. We beat Persipony in Booton, Pompton Lakes, Butler. And we played a lot of close games. We have nothing to be ashamed of. And I think, I think these guys did an incredible job setting an example for a very young team. We had 25 players start the season, and we had 25 players finish the season. And that's really important, that everybody stayed with the program for the whole season. These guys did a great job setting the example for the younger players. The younger players, they, we don't have a freshman team. We just play JV and varsity, so it can be quite intimidating at the beginning of the season. But these guys did a great job. Zach got honorable mention in the conference, and Jace and Ryan got second-team All-Conference. So we're gonna miss these guys, but they did a great job carrying the tradition on. So, thank you very much for all coming tonight. And of course, I thank our Principal Suda, Assistant Principal Arroyo, who I coached with for many years, our athletic director, Ms. Whitwer, and of course, the Board of Ed, and Mr. Mango. Thank you very much.
Just before boys' basketball leaves, I just wanna thank Mr. Kessinger for the time he's put into our program. He is retiring this year from coaching. So we wanna congratulate him, wish you all the best on your retirement, and enjoy, Mr. Kessinger. All right, I'd like to call up Coach Cheggwigan and Coach Hall for Winter Track, and any staff members and players they have here today.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Again, I'd like to thank everybody that makes athletics possible here. We have a couple of our representatives here for track. A lot of people couldn't make it tonight, but we wanted to highlight our Winter Track season. If anybody knows track, Winter Track's a bit different. We don't have a conference. You go to invitationals, you go to championship meets. So we don't have, like, there's no All-Conference, because there is no conference. But we have counties. And at our county relay championship meet, we took home first place in the 4x2 with Joseph Mendy, Jay Kang, Harrison Cornet, and Mohammed. And at the county championship individual meet, okay, Joseph Mendy took second in the 55 and the 300. Sora Hinton took second in the 55 as a freshman. So she's got a great future ahead of her. Just missed All-County, because, again, you have to win the county meet to get All-County. So it's one person in each event. Or hit a standard, like a super standard or an A-standard, which get adjusted each year based on the meet data that the county puts in. So Joe Mendy did receive All-County, because he hit the A-standard. Sora did hit the B-standard and was up for nomination, but there was only one spot left, and it ended up going to a senior at Morris Hills. So sometimes, the big schools sometimes beat us out for that. But, again, she's right there. In our state series, at the sectional meet, the boys took second overall, and the girls took seventh overall. And then the following athletes qualified for the state group meet. Joe Mendy took first in the 55 and second in the 400. Sora took second in the 55 and just missed... Sorry, nevermind, I'm jumping ahead. Jay took third in the 55. Henry Manton took third in the 1600 and fourth in the 32. Came in clutch for us to even put us in a position to be competing for the title in the 4x4 at the end of the meet. Vanessa Corn took fourth place in pole vault. Haley Nolan took fifth in high jump. Kieran Fitzgerald took sixth in the 1600. Alessia Sorrello took sixth in the 1600 and sixth in the 32. And our boys' 4x4 team took fourth overall. So all those people, all those athletes, I should say, went on to the state group meet. And at the state group meet, the top three are automatic qualifiers for the Meet of Champions, and then you have to receive a wild card, which is, you know, you have to, they give a certain amount out over the whole state. Sora took fourth and just missed in the 55 at Meet of Champs, and I have no doubt she'll be there next year. But she also qualified for the Nationals in the 60 meters, which she ran Nike and Boston Nationals this year. So, again, as a freshman, quite impressive. Also, she broke our school record in the 55, the 200, and the 60 meters. So, again, took three records down as a freshman. And then Joe Mendy qualified for Meet of Champs in the triple jump. So you have to be the top 24 in the state. And he jumped 45.9 and 1/2 at an open invitational, so that qualified him. I think he went in sixth or seventh in the state. Didn't have his best day at Meet of Champs, but, again, he qualified for Nationals in triple jump and the 60, which he competed at Nationals in both of those as well. And we had a couple other school records broken. Jay broke it in the long jump. Mohammed broke it in the 55 high hurdles. And our 4x2 team took down the 4x2 record for our school as well. So we had, I think, a pretty overall successful winter season. Our numbers are smaller in the winter, but even with that, I feel like we still compete amongst the best. And then, you know, we carry that over into the spring, and we're looking super strong coming for the spring on the boys' and girls' side. And we're really excited, wanna acknowledge that we have our one senior here, Sanai, and she's been a part of our program in the winter and the spring, so she's still with us. So I don't like to say bye to my seniors till it's absolutely necessary, but she's one of our hardest-working kids on our team, and definitely why she always, we look to her to be a leader. And I would say, all the, all our athletes, Sora, Henry, and Haley, again, they are big, big players as far as what they do for our team, not just on the track with their performance, but also with their leadership skills and how they kinda, even though they're younger, they still step into leadership roles for us. So, again, thank you very much for giving us the time to come and talk about our season, and congratulations to everybody this year on a great winter season.
No, you're good. You gotta recognize. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations to all the athletes that accomplished so much in Winter Track. I'd like to bring up boys' and girls' fencing coach, Mark Tech, his staff, and any members that we have of the team. There we go, we got a couple.
Hi, everyone. Unfortunately, Coach Mark couldn't be here today, so you have me, Skylar, assistant coach. So last year, we lost five seniors. But this year, we were fortunate enough to have a lot of freshmen come out and have a lot of sophomores return. And they performed exceedingly well for being new or newer to the sport. So we had Matthew Wable, who's graduating this year, make first-team All-Conference for men's foil. Juan Jaramillo make first-team All-Conference for men's saber. Also, every single day, he showed up to practice saying, "I'm gonna make it to counties. I'm gonna do really well in counties." And this year, he came in third place in counties. We have Dylan Castellana-Smith, who made second-team All-Conference for men's foil. Sam Baldino make second-team All-Conference for men's saber. Daniel Kachowski for honorable mention, All-Conference for men's epe. Funny enough for him, he started off as a saber, but we only had two men's epe, so he stepped up. And he performed exceedingly well. There were a lot of times where he surprised himself, but he was getting close to winning against some super-tough competitors, especially those in Morris Knolls, Randolph, Chatham. So just really surprising himself more than, you know, us. We knew what we expected of him, and he performed to what we expected. And then we have honorable mention, All-Conference Women's epe is Emma Klezitz. And honorable mention, All-Conference for Women's Sabers, Arushi Kumar. So here with us, we have Juan, Dylan, and we have Emily, who's a freshman this year and came out for our girls' foil. And she also did fantastic this year, and we are really excited to see how they turn out next year.
Thank you, Coach. Okay, we're gonna bring up Coach Boardman and any members of the girls' and boys' swim team.
All right, looks like we just have the boys team here. Elena left. All right, well, first I'd like to thank obviously the board, principal Mr. Suter, our AD, Ms. Whitwer. My assistant co, Mrs. Cromwell, she couldn't make it today. And then obviously our parents. Training and competing off-site, off-campus, you know, sometimes not a lot of people know the success that we have as a swim team. Very proud of both of my teams. I'm lucky enough to coach both the boys and girls team. First with our girls, unfortunately, not a lot could make it tonight. We had some girls that received awards, but they're training for, uh, their club national team down in North Carolina, so they could not make it tonight. Um, our girls have had a lot of success. This year, they finished five and two. They finished second in the NJAC Independence Division. They finished fourth at the Morris Counties. We were lucky enough to have a county relay champ this year for the 200 medley relay. So congratulations to them. We made it all the way again to the state sectional finals. Unfortunately, we lost to our rivals, Mountain Lakes. It seems like us and Lakes always meet that, make that meet. I think it's eight years in a row that we've been swimming each other. We won it the past previous two years. We made MOCs, which is the meet of champions. And typically, you get about 20 to 30 kids in the whole state that qualify for that event. We were lucky enough to have four girls participate. Our 200 medley relay got second in the state, which is pretty amazing. The only team that beat us was a private school, Pingree. So technically, we're the first, the fastest public school in the state of New Jersey. We had a record breaker, Anna Kilponen, who's gonna be swimming at the University of Villanova next year. She broke her 100-fly record. And she also got third place in the state in that event. As far as awards for the girls team, there are many. Um, I'm just gonna go through them really, really quick. For our NJAC, we had honorable mention, Melania Lucci. Girls' second team, Catherine Fritz in the 50 free. And then we have a whole bunch of first teams. We are lucky enough to have two relays get first team in the NJAC Conference. Our girls 200 medley relay, two free relay. For individuals, we have Anna Kilponen with the one-fly first team. Kylie Papenek, first team, 100 free. Ellie Decouplieri, first team, 500 free. And then Elena Ivosevic in the 100 back first team. So pretty amazing season. And just to relay how good the girls have been, and again, again, I wish they were here tonight. But in their, our senior group, in their four years of being here at Kittleon, they have a combined record of 41 and nine. They made two state championship appearances. They've won their conference championships two times, and they are two-time sectional champs. So let's give a round of applause to our senior girls. For our boys here, we have Matous here. We have Oliver and Everett finals. Everett was a team captain this year. And then we have AJ Connolly, and then we have Sean McSweeney. So for our boys team, our boys team had a great year. Um, we didn't know what the expectations were gonna be with the boys team, but they really just had a great, great season. They went undefeated in their conference play, and they are the 2025 NJAC Colonial Conference Champions. So congratulations, boys. The boys also made it to the sectional finals where it was a close meet, came down to our last race. We unfortunately lost to Parr Hills, but you guys should be really, really proud of yourselves. We had four, again, four members make MOCs. Um, standout performance was by Johnny Papenek, who's not here tonight. He got 11th in the 100 free, and he got 10th in the 50 free. And in the 50 free, he broke actually his uncle's record, who I actually taught in sixth grade, which is kind of crazy. It's a 13-year-old record. And if you know Luke Papenek, he actually swam in the Olympic trials. So if you ever break that record, that's a pretty good one. Um, I had to, I made sure I had him text his, his uncle about that. Um, really good. Again, we have a lot of awards with the boys. For honorable mention, Noah Montalvo got honorable mention for the boys. We have Sean McSweeney, who's here tonight, second team, 500 free. Congratulations, Sean. Pretty impressive as a freshman. Kyle Barsh got second team on the one-fly. And then again, we have numerous first teams. We were lucky enough to get two relays, first team all-conference, which is the boys two med, and then the boys two free relay. David Zoltak got first team on the one free. We have AJ Connolly, who's here tonight, first team, one-fly. Congratulations. And then Johnny Papenek, who was the fastest swimmer in the, in the conference in the 50 free. So again, I appreciate you guys coming out, celebrating, our swimmers. You guys had a great year. Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach. Congratulations to all of our swimmers on all their accolades. Next, I'd like to bring up Coach Colabella and the wrestling team and his coaching staff.
All right. Um, again, thank you to the board, Mr. Mango, administration, Ms. Whitwer, for, uh, all the continued support. Uh, with me today, just going from, I guess, that side of the horseshoe here, Ryan Asquith, Ethan Bardo, Anthony Mana, Dominic and Steven Malfatano, Nate Perella, Xavier Garcia, Karan Hinton, and Paulina Shardikova, Skorza Fava. I think I said it right. Um, wrestling, we took a lot of positive jumps in the right direction. We improved our record from last year, which was fif, uh, five and 15 to 12 and nine, which gave us the NJAC Independence Conference Championship, which is the first conference championship since 1991. Um, that was a goal they had set out pretty much since, uh, since I've been here to try to win a conference title, and we, we got it done this year. Um, we also qualified for the state section tournament for the first time since my first year coaching, seven years ago. Um, so a lot of people were excited about that, and I'm extremely proud of them. Um, just some individual accolades. Um, we had a couple of tournaments. So in the Lenape Valley Holiday Tournament, Dominic Malfatano took third place. In the Lenape Valley Holiday Tournament, I'm sorry, the first one was the Laker Holiday Tournament. The Lenape Valley Tournament, um, we had Luke Beatzel take first place, Wyatt Cisco take first place, Roman Rataco, Jack Doty, and Steven Malfatano all took second place. Leo Dmitriku, Karan Hinton, Xavier Garcia all took third place, and Lucas Di Lorenzo took fourth place. Um, in that tournament, as a team, we took second place, just getting edged out by Hannover Park by a couple of points, which is a big deal because they are a, a very cultured program. So that's the level we want to try to get to. Uh, in the Morris County Tournament, Wyatt Cisco took second place and Roman Rataco took sixth place. Uh, moving to the postseason district tournament, Dominic, Steven, Malfatano, and Wyatt Cisco all took second place in the districts to move on to the regions. Jack Doty took third place to move on to the region tournament. Uh, in the region tournament, Wyatt Cisco took third place to qualify for Atlantic City. And Paulina won her region tournament, um, qualifying for Atlantic City for the first time and going down to Atlantic City, uh, although hurting her ankle a little bit, still taking sixth in the state. Um, we returned pretty much the entire team, except a couple of people. So we're excited to kind of build and pick up where we left off this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach, and congratulations to our wrestling program. Next, I'd like to bring up Coach Souls and any of the bowling team and staff that he has here tonight.
I'm 58 years old and they still call me Jimmy. Call me Peter Pan. Okay. All right. So, um, I'll introduce our, our bowlers first. Um, we have, just wave your hands, guys. Christian, uh, we have Nate Eisenmenger, also known as Nasty Nate, John Sprague, Michael Sprague, JoJo, Preston, and Zach. Uh, coming off last year where we were state champions, uh, we really didn't know what to expect, but I knew we had a lot of talent coming back. But, um, we had another great year. Um, this team really had a season for the ages. When you hear of all their accomplishments, it really is amazing. And it's a testament to the hard work they put in, along with their parents, um, and , um, support from Ms. Whitwer, Mr. Mango, the board of education. Um, we couldn't do it without all of you. Um, they were undefeated conference champions. This is the first team that has, has won a conference championship since 2016 when it began. Um, Montville won every single one, and we were 2-0 against Montville this year. Um, and like I said, these guys, very good, undefeated. They ended up with a 21 and 2 record, okay, which is a school record for wins, and they are back-to-back North One, Group One champions. So I'd like to talk about some of the team achievements. Um, they set a team record for high series, um, and that was against Del Barton. It's always good to beat Del Barton. Okay? Um, in the NJAC Championships, they were first place with a high-team series. Um, in the Falcon Frenzy Tournament, they were the champions. In the Morris County Championships, they had the first-place high-team series. In the Roll for Veterans Classic, they had the first-place high-team series. They were the New Jersey Super Bowl champions. They were the North One, Group One champions. They were the NJAC East champions. Um, during the season, we reached the rank of three in the entire state. That's all groups, um, in NJ.com. Uh, we ended up number six. And, uh, like I said, those are team achievements. For the individual achievements, um, every single varsity starter made either all-county or all-conference, which is amazing in itself. Um, Morris County Championships, um, uh, we had two individuals that tied for high series, high series, Nate Eisenmenger and Michael Sprague. Okay? In the all-NJAC East first teamers, we had Nate Eisenmenger and John Sprague. Second team, Cooper Kaplan, Zach Kessler, and Michael Sprague. And honorable mention, Preston Jones. For all Morris County, and, um, uh, the winners of these awards were attending a luncheon tomorrow at the Randolph Diner. Good food, try it out. Um, we had first team, Nate Eisenmenger and John Sprague. Second team, Cooper Kaplan, Michael Sprague. Third team, Zach Kessler. And honorable mention, Preston Jones. During the season, we had two NJ.com NJAC Bowlers of the Week, Nate Eisenmenger and Cooper Kaplan. And we had two, uh, bowlers that were in the top 100 averages in the state. Um, and, um, that really is amazing because there's over 2,000 bowlers in the state of New Jersey. And two of our guys that made the top 100, that was John Sprague and Nate Eisenmenger. And last week, the all-state, um, winners came out for all-group one. Uh, first team all-state was John Sprague. And second team all-state was Nate Eisenmenger. For those of you that are still here, um, bowling is cool. Come out and try it. All right? Guys, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Coach, and our bowling team. Next, I'd like to bring up our, uh, state championship hockey team, Coach Myron, his staff, and his team.
Come back here, guys, so everybody can see you. Yeah. Show your face. All right. Well, first off, just like, uh, all the other groups, I want to thank the board of education and everyone here for having us and being able to showcase the fine work that these young men did this year. Um, with us tonight, I have my assistant coach, Patrick Marcantuno. All right, we have Joe Marino, Andrew Carrato, Matt Stack, uh, Costco, and Caden Lombardo. Hockey's a little different than some of the other sports. We don't have NJACs and things like that. It's broken down. We play in what's called the Menon Division for Morris County. Morris County has three divisions. It's tiered. They have the Haas Charette, the Halverson, and the Menon. So just to give you a little, um, you know, history, we formed this co-op in 2020, and the co-op division in the state is the largest bracket that there is. They have private, co-op, and then just simple public. And the co-op division's the, the biggest one. So, um, to give you a little history on, we've been building the program. Um, so before this year, last year, we graduated nine players. Uh, we had won, previously won the Halverson Division the last two years. We won the Halverson Cup. Um, we were actually undefeated the previous two years in conference play. Um, but after graduating nine and moving up to the, the Menon Division, which is the most prestigious, um, the toughest division, um, you know, we were a little unsure. We were very young going into the season, but we started out 8-0 and 1. Um, and we started to realize we, we might have something special here. So, um, we had a rough January, and then February, we started to put it back together again. And, you know, we were seeded eighth for the state tournament. We had just previously, um, lost in the Menon Cup semifinals. We finished third in, in our division, in Morris County. And, uh, you know, that really got us battle-tested for states. So we went into states and we were seeded eighth. We weren't the eighth seed. But, uh, you know, seeded eighth, you got a tough road. You got to play eight, nine. Then we had to play the number one seed. Then we had to play the number four seed. So we took care of business, you know, and, uh, had a great week of hockey, you know, winning each of those games handedly. And we went into the, the Prudential Center where these boys got to be pros for the day. You know, they brought three communities together, uh, Kittleon, Jefferson, and Sparta. We had a police escort. We had youth clubs. We had everybody, you know, cheering on these guys. Um, then went down to Prudential Center and, like the rest of the season, we handled adversity very well. We went down, going into the third period, down a goal, and these guys put it together. And, uh, we came out victorious, winning the, uh, the state championship down to Prudential Center. So that's a memory that, you know, not only these boys, but a lot of people in this town will never forget. You know, these guys, 20, 30 years from now, every time they walk into the Prudential Center, they're gonna feel like, you know, "I was a pro for a day. I came through that tunnel. I played on that ice." So what an experience for them to have. I couldn't be more proud, you know, for the way these guys worked, just like swimming. And, uh, you know, we're off-campus every day. So it's hours and hours and hours. And you see a quarter of the team here. Um, the other guys, this week is club tryouts. So everybody's at club tryouts. One of our, our top players is, uh, gonna be competing in nationals. So he's up in Connecticut right now playing. So we are missing some, but everybody's, that's because they're working hard with their sport. You know, they, they put in a lot of time. So I'll give you, um, some team and individual awards. We got a lot of them, and they're broken down a little different, so I'll kind of try and explain. Um, so first team Menon Division awards. So we have a couple there. We have Jake Prunty, a defenseman, Brayden Cisco, a forward. They were both first team. Then we have third team all-Mennon, uh, Brian Sisti, our goalie. And we have an honorable mention, Cormac Givens. He's our captain at forward. We also got the Menon Division MVP, which was Brayden Cisco. Um, in the state final game, they give an award called the Johnny and Matty Gaudreau Award. Um, and that's for the MVP of the state final game. Brayden Cisco was awarded that. And if you happen to be watching News 12 this weekend, this guy was all over it. Um, the New Jersey Sports Zone Hockey Player of the Year, all right, for the entire state, public, private, everything, uh, the entire year, was Brayden Cisco. Then we have all-state awards. Overall all-state awards, third team was Brayden Cisco. Then it's broken down. We have first team all-public co-op, Brayden Cisco, Jake Prunty. Then we had the Star Ledger's Morris County Secondary Schools Ice Hockey League Awards, and that was, uh, Brayden Cisco as well. As far as team awards, um, we had a overall ranking of 16. So we were top 20, Star Ledger. Um, you know, that's, that's overall, public, private, and, uh, co-op. So with a, a ranking of 16. We also won the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletics Association Sectional Champions, the public co-op for the north. And then the big one, the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association Overall State Champions for public co-op. So these guys had a heck of a year. It was a lot of fun. Um, thanks for your support, everyone. And I couldn't be more proud of you guys. What a year. You're never gonna forget it. All right. Congratulations on a great year. Couldn't be done without their hard work, my, my staff's hard work. They're at tryouts as well. So the other two guys, Mrs. Whitwer, uh, Mr. Mango, the whole board of education, thank you for letting us showcase, showcase this tonight. And, uh, so proud. Congratulations, boys.
Congratulations, Coach, and our ice hockey team. Well done.
The administrators can go if you guys want. Do you guys want to stay? There's... It's empty. Okay.
Okay, where's John? Jonathan Eisenmenger. Oh, is he taking pictures? Mr. Eisenmenger? All right, we'll, we'll go ahead and start with finance and facility. Okay, so committee reports. The committees did not meet this last week, but we'll just ask any of the chairs if they have anything they want to say. Finance?
Yeah, just very briefly, we did meet with the town council to go over a few items. It was a really productive, very collaborative meeting. We'll have more to discuss in executive session, so, but very good.
Yeah, that was a really collaborative meeting with the town. I agree. Personnel... Hey, John. Do you have anything from Personnel Committee you want to pass? No? Okay. Educations, Kelly, you have anything?
We didn't meet this month, but I'm, I'm sure April's going to be a big month.
Anything from Policy? Anything to say? Nope. Okay. All right. Delegates, New Jersey School Boards Association, do you have anything to pass? No. Morris County, anything from Morris County? Oh, sorry, wrong person. Nope, okay. Legislative, nope. Morris County Education Services, anything, Kelly?
Yes, they did have their first meeting of the year, and they approved the budget.
All right. Community Relations, KEA liaison, are we... Mr. Pepe's not here, and KF, okay. Petitions and hearings of citizens for agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to say? Mr. Petricelli? Okay, all right. So we have agenda items A through D. Like a motion for block vote, a roll call block vote on agenda items A through D. Can I have a motion? And second. Carl, motion, and Dana, second. Okay, discussion. Anybody have any discussion on any of these items?
Just wanted to confirm that, that the three summer courses were, we've, we've found personnel for each of them, right? That's great.
So was this just amendments, right? The, was just updates on the volunteers for personnel and for the attachments? So for this one, personnel negotiations, the curricular list? Yeah, they were just the updates, the start amendments, okay.
Could I ask to move the, the third HIB on first reading to executive, just to, to chat?
Okay. So you want a motion to postpone the vote on the third one?
Just the third one.
Okay. So can I have a motion?
The one that says ongoing, that's the...
Yeah, it does say ongoing, so... Okay, so well, what we'll do is we'll make a motion to postpone the vote, the first reading vote on the third HIB. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you'll make the motion. I second it. All in favor? Aye, okay. All right, so now approving agenda items A through D, with the exception of the third HIB. Any other further discussion? Okay, seeing none? Could you pull the board, please?
Mrs. Leonard? Mr. Myers? Mrs. Perella? Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes. Committee of the whole, we don't have any unfinished business. Is there anything unfinished? No, new business? Anybody have any new business? Correspondence, do we have any correspondence, anything digital? Nope, okay. All right, petitions and hearings of citizens for non-agenda items. Okay, done? Board member comments? Does anybody want to talk? No? Okay, all right. Motion to go into executive session? Okay. All right.